Here we go.
There we go.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order being of the city council, March 12th, year of our Lord, 2024, 6:00 P.M. Item two will be in vocation that will be led by Pastor Nicholas Cattaway from Belmont Baptist Church, and then led of the pledge allegiance and the Texas pledge by our councilman Chris Haney and our Girl Scouts that are here with us today. So Pastor, how you doing Pastor? Good to see you. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment, prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up and joining the council in a moment of prayer. Pastor, this is your church, you have the floor.
Thank you sir. Would you pray with me? Father, thank you for today. God, we thank you for this city, and Lord, we pray that you would bless it. Father, I pray for your hand to be upon this city. God, I pray that Odessa would flourish. Lord, I pray for our families. God, I pray especially for those that are under pressure, that feel stressed. Lord, those families that are in danger of breaking apart. God, I pray that you would bless them, and I pray that you would hold them together. God, I pray for our youth. Lord, I pray that you would strengthen them, God. I pray that you help them to make good choices. God, I pray that you help them to desire good things in life and not to pursue after evil. Lord, I pray for our schools and our teachers. God, especially our teachers, I pray that you would encourage them. Their job is hard, and Lord, I pray that you give them joy in their work. Lord, I pray for our businesses. Lord, I pray for our churches. God, I pray for our first responders, that you would protect them as they protect us. Lord, I pray for our city government, especially for Mayor Hoven. God, I pray for blessing upon him. Lord, help him as he leads this city. And God, I pray for this council. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom as they manage this city. God, I pray that you give them vision for what Odessa needs. Lord, I pray that you help them to love what is good. And Lord, I pray that you help them to hate what is evil. I pray all these things, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Want me to bring the girls up? Stand right here, right here in this space.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, on verge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Good evening. Tonight you have Girl Scouts of the Desert Southwest. We have girls aged kindergarten, all the way through cadets, which are sixth or eighth graders. Girl scouting builds girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. We work on service projects, we help our community. We teach our girls about new and exciting things, so it gives them micro credentials for later on, so that they can use them when they go into the workforce, or right there in their schools now. We help them learn about four pillars: STEM, entrepreneurship, life skills, and outdoors. Nothing like being put on the spot right now. And our outdoors, believe it or not, is my favorite, because I'm one of our archery instructors. My name is Patty Craven. I am the CEO for Girl Scouts of the Desert Southwest, and with you, you have Girl Scouts here from Odessa. Do we have Midlandos? All Odessa. All Odessa. And they love doing all kinds of things, but right now is their cookie season. And they are enjoying going out and learning how that business model works. They are teaching, they're learning about how to set goals, how to plan their year and budget, so that their sales will cover all their costs for the year. We want to teach our girls how to fish, not how to hand them a fish, right? We want them to be able to be self-sufficient later on in life. And that's what girl scouting is all about. It's giving them those opportunities and abilities that they might not have any other way. So today happens to be March 12th, and that is Girl Scout birthday. We were founded in 1912, and we have been here in the Permian Basin for a lot of time. I believe it was the 1940s that we started here. And so today, I believe the city is giving us a proclamation for that.
Where the city of Odessa would like to proclaim, whereas a March 12th, 2024 marks 112th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, the largest and most impactful leadership program for the girls in the world. Whereas the Girl Scout movement began in March 12th, 1912, when Julia Daisy Gordon Low, a native Savannah, Georgia, organized a group of 18 girls, provided them with the opportunity to develop physically, intellectually, socially, and spiritually. Whereas over a century, Girl Scouts of the United States of America has advanced its mission to build girls of courage, confidence, character, who make the world a better place. Whereas today, more than 50 million women, trailblazers, visionaries, and leaders are Girl Scout alums who have made the world a better place. And whereas a member of the organization of the World Association of Girl Guides, Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts as part of an international sisterhood of 10 million girls and young women in 152 countries, and is committed to offering girls more opportunity to engage with communities worldwide, make a meaningful global connection, and explore global citizenship. Now therefore, Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of this wonderful city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout movement, the Girl Scouts of the Desert Southwest, for providing our girls with a secure, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. Proclaim March 12th, 2024, it's Girl Scouts of the Desert Southwest. So we encourage throughout the city of Odessa and beyond, urge all citizens to join us here in the city council in recognizing the Girl Scouts of the United States of America on its special day, March 12th, 112th birthday, celebrating its legacy of providing girls with a secure, inclusive space where they can provide the world, build meaningful relationships, and have access to experiences that prepare them for the life of leadership. Let's give these girls and these moms and these participants and volunteers a round of applause. Congratulations. And thank you for joining us, and what a wonderful job you did on the pledge. You helped guide Councilman Haney all the way through it. Thank you. Appreciate you absolutely. Make sure you get your pictures, get your pictures.
There's a smile, there's all the paparazzi over here to the left.
Alright, y'all look here, ready? One, two, three. Good job, thank you.
Hold it, girl, we've got mom, we've got more pictures. Thank you, appreciate you.
Someday we'll get better chairs.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna get chairs here.
Well, that's what God says, he's got some samples coming.
Yeah, that thing's down again. That's low, you're low. You're low again.
I'm all the way up. That's which chair it's on. Oh, we're gonna do the, are we doing the video?
Yes.
Ready? Okay, we got one other special presentation before we get going on this. Are you ready?
We want to bring up here Assistant Chief Chavez. We're gonna show a special video of something very heroic he did. Come on up here. And I, you know, every day, our heroes work so hard for us. And I think you're gonna be really inspired when you see what he did. So we're gonna start with our English version of the story, and then we're gonna do a Spanish version for you. Yes, you're the man of the hour, so you get to.
An Odessa firefighter saved a baby's life after he fell three days. This heroic act, one mother, never forget. Very thankful, I owe him a lot. This mother started pleading for help to Odessa Fire Rescue's Assistant Chief Daniel Chavez. The moment that we were at the traffic light, he was turning, and my sister told me, sign to him, sign to him. So I signed to him, and he was able to see me. He stopped, and I remember getting off with my son in my arms and said, please help me, my baby is not responding. Chavez told her to follow him to fire station four, and this mother was scared her son may be gone. My son was already dead. He had already changed color, his lips and everything. My sister said, well, he is already dead, he's clearly dead. And I gave my son to him, and I think he was giving him oxygen. He tells me that, he is okay, your baby came back.
Thankfully, we ran into each other, you know, God's will, and I was able to give him the rest of the breath, and that got his heart rate back up too as well.
It's no easy feat what Chavez did, but he also did it alone.
Yes, we're all paramedics, but when you have no equipment, no assistance, that's a big difference.
Odessa Fire Rescue's Chief Jason Cotton says when Chavez arrived to the fire station, all firefighters immediately stood out in the hall. But since all Odessa firefighters must be paramedics, which isn't the case in all cities, Chavez was extra prepared to handle this.
Chief Chavez was calm, put all of his training into play, and the outcome was perfect.
It brought a happy ending that led to sweet reunition weeks later.
Seeing her and the baby, it was, oh, I was overwhelmed with emotion. I can't lie, my balls probably got a little sweaty.
Odessa's Mayor Javier Hoven says this is why city leaders support first responders with what they need.
This is why he invests in professionals in the city of Odessa, because now we have a brighter future, but it is a safer Odessa.
And Chavez can't help but think how bright of a future this baby will now have.
What kind of impact is he gonna have on our society? This might be a mayor someday, this might be a president, you never know.
Which thanks to Chavez, this mother gets to watch her son grow up. Well, thank you so much for bringing my son back to life. I don't know how to repay you. Odessa firefighters go through so much training so that they can handle any situation. And our city leaders say they will support first responders any chance possible to keep all Odessa safe.
That was the English version. We felt it was appropriate to do a Spanish version. As you can tell, the mother had that language barrier, and it must have all the cards lined up right, the man above, because fortunately Chief Chavez does speak Spanish, so, kind of, like me, and so it kind of lined up. So we just hope to take a few more minutes and show you the video in Spanish. It's a little different.
The action of the official Chavez is algo que él dice aprendió desde que comenzó a ser bombero, y para lo cual se ha preparado durante muchos años. Hoy él está agradecido de reunirse con el pequeño Guadalupe Lupito, como le dicen, y su madre Annie.
So yeah, like, no, eso, pero ya, ya cuando llegaron los, eh, el pequeño Lupito, el bebé, ya daba la carita, hacía trenas, la carita, y estaba ahí, ya me lo iban quitando, esos, esas cosas son bien.
Sin duda es un héroe de la comunidad, dice haber hecho lo correcto y agradece haber estado en el momento y el lugar justo para salvar la vida de ese pequeño, quien dice, ¿por qué no? Podría ser un futuro bombero también.
Sí, eso es porque si no era por esto, uno no sabe qué hacer. Y todos los traernes eso me ayudó.
And she wrapped up, "Thank you, I owe him a lot." Chief Chavez, thank you for all you guys for being the hero that you are every day.
Well, if you know Chief Chavez, you know he's in the position he's in as Assistant Chief for a reason. One thing I'd like to point out in the video is that when he arrived at Station Four, he had no help. Everybody at OFR, they're required to be paramedics, usually within about the first couple of years. We're all paramedics, yes, but when you show up to a scene like that, and you have no equipment and no assistance, like it said, it's a different story. He handled it professionally, did exactly what he was trained to do, 20 years of service plus, and the outcome was perfect. So the men and women of Odessa Fire Rescue are all that way. But he got to show the community what he's about that day, and save a life, and it's what we do.
So Chief Chavez, you know, what we're gonna present you is just a small token, it's a small comparison of your action. One of the things about the humility of this man is that we actually had to talk him into, you know, allowing us to be able to recognize and tell this story. And why we do what we do here as a city, and why we invest into our personnel. I've said this countless of times. We invest in people, and when you build people up, that's what grows a community. Mr. Chief Chavez is the epitome of that, and he represents this, you know, he is just one member of a great organization. We've said this time and time again. When you make that call, you want a professional that is highly trained at the end, that's gonna answer that call. And that's what we have in the Odessa Fire Department. With all our first responders, and also our 911, and for a member of the community to look and recognize that vehicle and know that there was help, and that help was delivered, is unmeasurable. And so, any money that we put in, this is why we do it. It's worth one life, it's not more, and thank you very much. We want to be able to present you with a certificate of appreciation to Daniel Chavez for the heroic, even though he doesn't see as a heroic act, it is what he does every single day. And we are thankful to have men and women like this, being here and serving our community. Because while we're at home, and we're sound asleep with our doors locked, we have people in uniform that are patrolling and answering those calls and running into danger. And there's no amount of money that is enough to be able to give to these men and women that serve us day in, day out, 365, 24/7. Let's give them another round of applause to show my appreciation. You sure?
Yeah.
Now, I will tell you this, the 25th straight consecutive picture that I've taken here in the last couple of days, I'm still the shortest guy in the country. Alright, any citizen comments on non-agenda items can do so by filling out a card and making any comment. I will recognize the council that we cannot respond on any non-agenda items. Can everybody hear me fine in the back, back row? Thank you. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before, during, or during the consideration of said item. I will now request the council to overlook the consent agenda and make a motion to approve, modify, or deny the consent agenda as proposed. I have a motion by councilmember to approve the consent agenda as proposed. Do I have a second? Second. Second by councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to our regular agenda, item seven. No, no, I'm sorry, item six. Make sure. Item six, consider request for Mavric Engineering applicant for a zone change.
That's part of the consent.
Is that consent?
Number seven, sir.
Number seven, mayor. So we are on seven, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so it is John Rogers. Consider reject, wait, 'cause I saw Elizabeth come up.
Oh, sorry, I got it.
You're number eight.
You're further down, I was gonna say, I was like, that's what confused me. That's what confused me, I saw her come up, but hey. Because this is, yeah, I thought this was something that we looked at two weeks ago, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what happens when I overread and study.
Come on up.
So, yeah, we're gonna go to item seven, consider rejecting all bids of Ratliff Ranch Golf Links driving range renovation. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor, council.
We won't hold that you're from Midland either, we won't hold it against you.
Please don't.
Go ahead.
So we are asking to reject all bids for the driving range renovation at Ratliff Ranch Golf Links to remove a line item and reopen the bids. The line item to be removed is the topsoil line item that came in at over $370,000. We do have a good growing soil here in Odessa, so we would like to remove the line item and reopen the bids.
Okay, so you're gonna rescind it out without that line item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions on it, any comments?
I guess the only question I've got, John, is we have all that dirt we get up over there at the drainings at Park Spill, can we not use some of that?
Yes, sir.
There's some good red dirt over there.
Absolutely, that's our plan.
Oh, okay, good, because it's ours.
It's good growing soil, so.
Oh, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's nice and red, I know that. Stay out of the colici.
Right.
There's plenty of that too.
No doubt.
Okay, that's all I hear.
Any other comments, council?
I have a comment. Just wanted to thank you guys there at Ratliff for the job you're doing, improving the greens and whatnot. It's not going unnoticed, I know that we have, just recently, we had some very popular YouTubers, who, you guys who follow golf, caught a good-good. They were making a kind of a little trek across from Arizona to Dallas, and they stopped and played at Ratliff. In one of their videos, it said, "New favorite golf course in Texas," and that was Ratliff Ranch. And they also talked very highly about the greens at Ratliff. So just kudos to you guys for improving those greens and making Ratliff a lot better place.
Thank you so much. It's absolutely a team effort. The guys are doing great at Ratliff Ranch. A quick update on the financials at Ratliff. We're up 29% year-over-year since October in rounds, 33% merchandise in the shop, 39% total revenue, and on the range, we are up 72% year-over-year. So it's, there's a lot of hard work, and we're proud of it. We know that we're five months into the fiscal year, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep mashing the gas and finish strong.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for those numbers.
Thank you.
If there is no more comments or discussion, I will entertain a motion for fully rejecting of all bids of Ratliff Ranch with Golf Links Driving Range. Motion by councilmember Thompson. Thompson.
I got Swan's chair, but.
I'm sorry, yeah. Do I have a second? Second.
He'll second it too.
I have a second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. I had a senior moment.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, you confused me when you said in Denise's chair. Okay, we're gonna go move on to a public hearing, item eight, remove the table to open a public hearing to consider the request for Cassandra Huggins, Dynamic Engineering Consultants, PC. Now you're up.
Now I am. So, this item is a repetition.
Excuse me, council, if I may, could you remove from the table, please?
Yeah, we're gonna move.
Did we table this two weeks ago?
Yes.
Alright, now that we got that cleared, if I, do I have a motion to remove from table item eight to open a public hearing to consider the request for Cassandra Huggins, Dynamic Engineering? I have a motion by councilmember. Second. Second by councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. It's off-table, and now back to the public hearing, item eight, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. So this item was brought back. It was so Mr. Councilman Thompson had an opportunity to review this item, since it is in your district. So Christian Brothers is doing an automobile in Shiloh Estates area. And one of our requirements as part of our approval for the permit is condition E. And due to some legal issues, they had asked for us to do a modification, which would now is the one, the modification that's on your screen. And so therefore, I'm asking for approval of this new ordinance with this modification that would read, "Review of the permit upon receiving neighborhood complaints about violation. City councils shall have the right to amend, change, or terminate the permit for violations of the terms and conditions of the permit after holding properly noticed public hearing." Therefore, I'm asking for your approval with this modification.
Any council, any discussion?
The modification pretty much just removed the temporary language.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. Kind of a distinction without a difference.
And Mayor, council, this is the language, and I've reviewed it, and I'm okay with the language. It's also tied into them getting financing.
Right.
So I think it's important that we help them, so that they can build. I think it's like a 10-bay facility or something they're gonna build. It's gonna be pretty nice out there.
Dan and I had a conference call with them.
Right.
Earlier this week, and I'm all in agreement, I think it's gonna be terrific there, so. Good-looking facility that I got going up. So I would move a brutal.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Thompson, item eight, for to, oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item eight can do so by filling out a card, stating your full name, and only your full name. And there you, how are you doing? So just state your full name.
Cassandra Huggins with Dynamic Engineering. So as councilmember Thompson had mentioned, we did. So, as councilmember Thompson had mentioned, we did, we did discuss the project further with councilmember Thompson as requested. And it was promising conversation, but again, I'll let him speak to it. But myself and Christian Brothers are here if you do have any other questions.
Council, any questions?
May I add that it is a local franchisee from Odessa.
Okay, well, good. That's good to know.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys for the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to address this item can do so by coming forward and stating your full, your full name. Seeing that nobody rushed the podium to do so, I will close the public hearing portion. And I have a motion by councilmember Thompson to approve item eight as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Matto, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that investment. We're going to go on to item nine, open a public hearing to consider resolution creating the Windmill Crossing Public Improvement District. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, I have Zach Little with P3 Works. Mary Petty did not join us tonight. Instead, she sent Zach. So Zach is going to take over and handle this.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Well, I'm just speaking the truth.
As Dan said, yes, my name's Zach Little. I'm with P3 Works. We're the city's pit administrator. So the item you have in front of you this evening is the call of public hearing for the creation of the Public Improvement District of Windmill Crossing. This is an operation and maintenance pit that will be used to levy assessments on property only within that district in order to create revenue, in order to operate and maintain the parks within that district.
And Zach, so that everybody's clear, if I buy a house out there, then I will have noticed that they're going to charge me extra for these parks.
That is.
Public improvement.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So this will be something everyone will know about. This will not be something that will just happen on the sly. It will be completely noticed, because law requires it.
There'll still be a public park.
Yes.
That's another question that's going to be asked, is it is, so a pit is a public improvement. So what happens is that the cost of maintaining goes into the lot before it's developed. And so it's incorporated into the sale. And, but it is still a public park. But, it's not an investment on the city's part, so the rest of the community doesn't have to pay for it. Those that live there are the ones that do it. And they will be notified as they purchase properties that this is part of the deal.
Right.
So, there's no hidden, there's no agendas here.
No.
This is, this is a way of still being able to create green space, public pays, without overburdening the rest of the taxpayers. And this is something that many cities are going to, this is going to be the first of its kind in Odessa. And this will be the future that's going to happen in development as we move forward. Council, any comments? Any discussion?
We just need to, we have opened the.
Yeah.
So I just, the comment I want to make is that on the contract for sale for the piece of land, HOA dues, PID dues have to be disclosed. Yes. So that's where people will get. Yes, that's where they'll know about it.
Yes, sir.
They'll know about it, too. And I think we have Lonnie here from Beaton, if I'd like for him to come up and speak.
You want to, you want to get, you want to get interrogated? We can do so.
I'll come up real quick. I'm Ronnie Wallace with Beaton, Mahomes. I think last time I gave you my address and you, you said.
Yeah, I know, we shared it with the whole public. So did you get a lot of calls?
Yes, sir. No, we just want to say we're very excited about the pit, and we want to thank the mayor and the council, and also Dan and city staff, Elizabeth and everybody. We're excited. It's a great way to maintain parks, and we're excited about, about these parks that we're putting in. It was up at Windmill Crossing today, and development has come along really nice, great piece of property. We're blessed to have it and to be a part of Odessa. So, looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. We're looking forward to more developments, more working together.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to address the council or address this, this issue on item nine as presented can do so by coming forward and stating your full name and only your full name. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And council, if there's no any more discussion or comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval on item nine as presented.
So.
I have a motion by councilmember.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And mayor, if I may, before we go any further, I do want to thank Elizabeth Shaughnessy. She's the one that put us in touch with P3 Works. And so, it's really, really good. They've been really great. Yeah, she's the one that put us in touch with P3.
Well, we found out that before then, we didn't know a whole bunch.
Yeah.
And we learned a whole lot afterwards. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Good job, Liz, put us in touch with them.
So we're going to move on to item ten, open public hearing to consider request for Michael Matthews for a special use permit to allow a tavern bar. Ms. Shaughnessy.
Thank you again, mayor and council. So, Michael Matthews is requesting approval of a specific use permit for a tavern bar within a retail development, which will be located at forty-five fifty-five East University Avenue, sorry, Boulevard, Suite C four. Staff recommends approval of this SUP, subject to conditions one through three. I'm now open for any questions, if you guys have any.
This is, the location, the address, is already an existing tavern there? It's just, are they changing names?
It's a new owner.
New owner, right?
New owner, and they are doing some modifications.
Yeah.
We, we put it under a tavern bar. They will be having food from the next door neighbor. And I, I think their, the representatives are here.
But the previous, the previous ownership was already existing nightclub?
I, yeah.
It was, right?
Yes.
Is that the old?
Blue.
Was it called?
If you want to come.
Yeah, come up here. Now, what was the name of it?
So, it was originally opened by Mr. Hans in two thousand thirteen in the Steep nightclub. Then it was changed to Black Gold by Terry Sangin in twenty fifteen.
That's the one I was searching.
It's been The Rock since twenty twenty.
Honestly, when I saw this and I was reading my packet, like, and then when I started looking, I said, oh, this is already something that exists. And so, is it, this is new ownership in an existing space?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, in essence, it's not an addition. It's just converted, it's just a name change.
Name change, pretty much, yeah.
So it's, previous with Black Gold?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We did enter a catering agreement next door to Josie's Grill, at least for the next year. They're going to be catering our place. They'll be handling all the food and prep as far as that goes.
Well, that's good. That's, that's, that's a help. Council, do we have any questions?
No.
Any comments?
Hmm.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address this issue, item ten, can do so by coming forward and stating their full name and only their full name. You can do so by coming up forward now. See, now everybody's sitting there like, oh. Seeing that no, no one's coming forward, I will close the open hearing portion. Entertain any discussion, entertain a motion for approval, denial or amendment.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Vasquez. I have a second.
Second.
Second by councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to ordinances, item eleven, consider an ordinance authorizing donation of portion of the Bates Field Road to Hector County in portions of West County Road, one seventy-one, South County Road, thirteen twenty-five to Midland County. Mr. Tuck.
Thank you, mayor and council. What I'm bringing you is an ordinance for consideration of donating about four miles of road that the city owns. It's out in Hector County and Midland County. We've owned this road since nineteen seventy-nine when the Bob Derrington plant, that section of land was purchased. We just recently realized we do own the road. Both counties have agreed to take ownership and continue their maintenance. So this is really just kind of a cleanup item.
Council, any discussion? If there's no, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve, amend, or deny item eleven as presented.
So be it.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Haney, second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item twelve, consider the sale and conveyance of the old fire station, number six, two town and country drug. Mr. Jones.
So mayor, we spoke with Megan Prado earlier today. I believe her and her realtor, Wayne Dunson, are going to reach out to our realtor, John Harridge, and put in another price. So, at this time, we would need to reject this.
Okay. So recommendation by council from the city is to reject item twelve as presented. Any discussion? If no, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Thompson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Haney. All in favor to reject item twelve as presented and be brought back with renegotiations on the price. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item resolutions, item thirteen, consider authorizing the city of Odessa Police Department to accept appropriate and authorized expenditures from awarded Texas law enforcement officer standard education. Mr. Chief Gerke.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is simply a request to accept twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents from the Texas Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education Funds. We, we get these funds every year. This is considered to be higher than we, what we normally get, but we'll take it.
Yeah.
And these funds can be used specifically for training and education for certified police officers.
Sounds good. Council, any discussions?
No.
Entertain a motion to allow Chief PD and Chief Gerke to accept these monies that are donated.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Vasquez. I have a second.
Second.
Second by councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item fourteen, consider accepting operations maintenance service for assessment plan for the Windmill Crossing Public Investment District and calling a public hearing to consider levying of the assessment. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, again, Zach Little is here, and so Zach will take over and tell us about this. But this is actually the maintenance and assessment plan, which of course will be published. And, go ahead, Zach.
Yes, sir.
I'll shut up.
Good evening again. So, yes, this document is what's going to be governing the actual district. This will lay out how the assessments will be levied as well as collected. And then this will also outline the total amount that will be levied against that property inside the district, as well as the actual authorized improvement costs, which will be updated yearly in order to operate and maintain the district.
Council, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept item as presented, item fourteen.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Matto, second by?
Second.
Councilman Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Move on to item fifteen, consider amending section six point one zero five media relations, social media of the city of Odessa personnel policies and procedures. City manager, Big Meyer?
Okay. In the eighty-eighth legislature, the Texas legislature approved a bill relating to use of TikTok on devices owned at least by governmental entities and mandating all governmental entities to adopt a policy providing its installation of use on such devices. And by the way, the Congress is about to adopt the same type of thing maybe for the region. And the president has indicated that he would sign it if adopted. That's what this is. It's going to TikTok on our governmental devices, which hurts some people to note now.
We're not naming names.
We're not naming names.
Monica.
But it's, it's what I think to do.
And mayor and council, had I listened to Norma a couple weeks ago, this would have been in there. But I decided not to listen to Norma. I'm paying for it down here right now. So, my apologies.
Apologize to her, not us.
Oh, I have. I've got elbow down here.
Council, any discussion? This is pretty straightforward.
It is.
So, I entertain a motion to accept item fifteen.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Cornell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Second.
We're going to go on to miscellaneous. Item sixteen, consider authorization of two easements sought by Oviny USA Incorporated presented by, I don't even want to say that name.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
Come on up. You know who you are.
And mayor, I don't know if y'all remember or not, but here a week or two ago, I sent y'all a copy of the check for two twenty-six.
I did see that.
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand from Dawson. So Steve's got some more news for us tonight, and hopefully y'all will be happy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm still learning the art of drafting city council agenda items, so I'm actually going to take these in reverse order because it makes more sense that way.
Well, hang on. Steve, are you going to do seventeen?
I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, could you do a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Thompson. I have a second.
Second.
Second by councilmember Matto. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And now if you.
Now, we're going to skip item sixteen and move to item seventeen.
If you will read, you want to read it off, mayor, seventeen?
Consider a general update regarding easement sought by N-Link and Enterprise, as well as the progress regarding oil and gas lease for the city of Odessa Minerals. You have the floor, sir.
There we go.
Thank you, mayor. And I, I'll commit to this body that I'll try to do better on my agenda items.
No, you're good. It's easy for us to adjust to you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Well, just a brief update. The Dawson Geophysical Transaction that we talked about when I was here last has closed. Payment has been received. The oil and gas leases we discussed, in line with the October requests for proposal, they're in progress. We should have those done by the end of the month with our counterparties. What we're here to talk about today is N-Link and Oventive USA. There's been a significant uptick in activity just northeast of downtown as a result of Oventive USA drilling a number of wells. The general area is west and northwest of the intersection of Fodry Road and Yukon Road. I've tried to put together some maps to make sense of it. As a land attorney, my world is broken down into section blocks and sections, blocks and townships. We're talking about the north half of section forty-four, block forty-one, township one south. For all of us, it's just that kind of northwest area above Yukon Road. I think I've got, I might, I'm not going to be able to use the mouse on here.
No, you're good.
On the, on the western boundary of section forty-four, if we're looking at the road map on the right, where Yukon Road hits the section line, there are a number of crossings that several companies are wanting to make for a series of pipelines that are facilitating water takeaway and oil takeaway from this Oventive project to the south. So when I talk about road bores tonight, we're talking about road bore, bore holes going under Yukon Road at that western boundary of the section line.
This is the bore on the, the bore profile that you have by Topographic?
That is correct.
What's the size of the bore?
Honestly, mayor, I.
You don't know?
I don't know yet.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at it on the.
One of the overarching themes here tonight is the, the bore hole crossings don't have to be approved by city council. It's more of a matter of engineering for the city engineer. What does have to be approved are the easements. And we're going to talk about those in just a second. So, just an overview of the transactions that are being sought from the city. Oventive USA, which is an oil and gas operator, is looking for a twenty-foot wide easement on a piece of property I'll show everyone in just a moment in section forty-one. It's for produced water takeaway, water that comes out of the ground when oil is produced and must be disposed of. Oventive, in the same breath, is needing a bore across Yukon Road, where I just pointed out in section forty-four. N-Link North Gathering LP, just referred to generally as N-Link, they need an easement that is actually going to parallel the Oventive easement in section forty-one. And they are still unclear on whether or not they're going to need a bore underneath Yukon Road, but.
That they want the easement?
I've seen their maps, and I, I can't figure out how they're not going to need it. So I think that's on the horizon. Enterprise Interstate Crude, actually, their attorney caught me on the way to this meeting. They're also going to need a bore across Yukon Road, but their pipeline is not going to cross the city's actual surface real estate. Again, the bore hole profiles, the road crossing agreements, they're called conduit license agreements. Those can be taken care of outside of this body and with the city engineering department. But what we're here to talk about tonight is the specific easements. And, and my apologies, this information is very fresh. It only came together today. Thankfully, the agenda items covered it. But I'll go into the particulars now. In section forty-one, in fact, I'm going to go back. In section forty-one, in fact, I'm gonna go back. If everyone can see, on the map on the left-hand side, the top two-thirds of the map, there's a draw going through the right-hand side of what is section forty-one. It's kind of at the top of the map. It's an oblong property that the city owns. City Council's probably aware of it. I believe it was a gift or a transaction with the Bell family. That's what this easement I'm about to talk about is going to cross. It's a rather short easement. There is some debate amongst our counterparties right now at Oventive and N-Link about just how long it is. We know it's going to be somewhere between twenty-eight and forty-eight rods. It's, in the world of easements, it's a pretty short easement. But it's crossing city property, and it has the potential to disrupt city operations in the future, so we take it seriously.
Are you going off each rod being sixteen feet?
Sixteen point five feet, Mayor. I have, from a call I had just before I left the office, a key for this map. I'm glad it's blown up on the screen. I don't know how clear it is on the council member's screens. But on the furthest outside of this, outside of the lines running through the middle of the page, there are these oblong blocks in the dog leg. That's gonna be additional temporary workspace where pipeline construction operation's gonna take place. When you go into the next layer, that yellow line, between that and the green line, that's going to be temporary workspace where basically pipe is gonna be laid before it's put in the trench. And then when you get to the blue line, the northernmost thin blue line, you are looking at the center line of what is going to be N-Link's easement. And because these easements are gonna be right up against each other, two twenty-foot easements next to each other, when you look at the pink line, it is actually the outer edge of Oventive's easement. And the Oventive easement that we're gonna look for approval here tonight is actually the thick green line running north, south, up to the top of the page, then east, west, off the page. So it's a very complex way of saying that, at the end of the day, in section forty-one, we're going to have this, two twenty-foot easements right next to each other. So why would I give all these specifics? The city attorney and I are about to ask the council for more permission for us to finalize a transaction based upon general parameters that are approved by this body. It is technically a grant of real estate, but unlike selling a firehouse, for example, it is a fluid transaction. These oil and gas companies, the parameters of what they need changes almost daily. The information you're seeing today is information I received after one P.M. today. So for that reason, we've tried to put together a tight agenda item specifically for the Oventive part of the easement. So we're gonna have a twenty-foot easement on the north side for N-Link. N-Link has not gotten to finalizing their monetary offer to the city, but Oventive has. And so I've come with a respectfully suggested resolution to adopt tonight on the Oventive easement. Just to go through the particulars of it, what, what this body would be authorizing the city attorney and Mr. Beckmeyer to do is to negotiate an easement agreement and a memorandum that would be filed in the deed records to evidence its existence that gives Oventive USA a pipeline easement, twenty foot in width. And then there will be additional temporary workspace, which is used only during construction, but then will revert back to the city after construction. And this will be across the feed lands in section forty-one, block forty-one. And the compensation on the table is thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. This would be a permanent easement, as opposed to a term easement that only lasts for ten years. There are merits to both, but in conjunction with the city attorney, we decided a permanent was the best in this case. It also results in the highest compensation for the taxpayers. So this is what we're asking for. I've tried to give the briefest overview possible, but I'm happy to answer questions before the city council considers.
Council, any questions? Any discussion? Any clarification?
I would, I would just ask you read the.
Oh, yeah.
Read it off there, and then give us a second and a vote, and.
That's what we're gonna wind up doing. So what we're needing right now in item seventeen is to need a motion for basically is to give authorization to the city attorney Dan Jones, city manager John Beckmeyer, with further advice on the outside counsel for the city by the authorization negotiation to execute on behalf of the city any agreements necessary to grant Oventive USA Incorporated certain pipeline easements in twenty-foot width exclusive for temporary workspace across the City of Odessa, feed lands in section one, block one, township one, as Ector County, for the compensation of thirty-two thousand four hundred. Council, if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member. Second by council member Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. That's item seventeen. We're gonna go back and revert to item sixteen.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I couldn't bear to break your stride. That actually was item sixteen.
That was item sixteen.
Yes.
Okay.
The seventeen was just like a discussion.
Yes. Okay, so have the minutes recorded that we made motion on? Do I have to reread it, take a vote on motion sixteen, 'cause I did it on seventeen? Go ahead and just redo it.
Yeah, redo it on the sixteen.
Okay, so we're gonna go on and entertain a motion for item sixteen, authorization of two easements sought by Ovini USA and presented by, I'm just gonna say Steve, and hereby move that allow the authority for our city attorney Dan C. Jones, John Beckmeyer, with further advice of the outside counsel for the city, be authorized to negotiate and execute half on the city of any agreements necessary for grant of the USA for certain pipeline in twenty-foot in a width exclusive temporary workspace across the City of Odessa, feed lands, section one, block one, township one, Ector County, Texas, and compensation of thirty-two thousand four hundred. Council, if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion by council member Haney. Second by council member Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. I think we got it.
I think we got it. Right there, Mr. Mayor. And again, due to my inartful drafting, there is not a second Oventive easement to approve. That is going to be the bore hole agreement, the conduit license agreement, which I will take care with Mr. Mayakin and Mr. Jones. And I hope that when I come back here in two weeks that I can report that N-Link is gonna be taking a very similar easement for similar compensation. So we can, we can get a second hit on this one.
Sounds good.
I believe that is all for now.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you all.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to item eighteen, appointments of boards. City Secretary Agler, go ahead.
For the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, reappoint council member Greg Cornell. For the Citizens Golf Advisory Committee, reappoint Elva Graham. She's agreed to serve, Mr. Thompson.
Good, thank you. Fix Nash.
For the Mayor's Appointment, Roy Hernandez.
Yes. He doesn't know yet.
For the Historic Preservation Commission, Kathleen McCullough has agreed to serve. For the Odessa Development Corporation, appoint Tim Harry. For the Tax Incentive Committee, reappoint council member Mark Mata. And reappoint Gus Ortega.
What is that? What is, you meet once a year.
That's why I like that one.
Dang, where'd I miss that? Were you sleeping? Okay. Item A, Animal Shelter Advisory, I have a motion for appointment of Greg Cornell.
I shall move.
I have a motion by council member Vasquez, second.
Second.
By council member Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. Historic Citizens Golf Advisory Committee, I need a motion for Elva Graham and Roy Hernandez.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Cornell, second by council member Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. Historic Preservation Commission, need a motion for Kathleen McCullough.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Mata, second by council member Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. ODC, Odessa Development Corporation, have a motion for Tim Harry. This is your, this is your opinion?
Yes.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by council member Cornell to have a second.
Second.
Second by council member Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay?
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Item M, maybe I have nothing. Tax Incentive Committee, I have a motion for Mark Mata and Gus Ortega to have a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member.
Second.
Second by council member Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating.
Epstein.
Epstein. All against, and one abstention. So it's four in favor and one abstention. I'm sorry, five, four, and one abstention, my math is bad. Okay. Nothing else on the appointments?
No, sir.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to item nineteen. I have, but wanna speak on item nineteen, so I wanna go ahead and let them speak.
Mayor, Mayor, the way it's listed is that we go into executive session on nineteen A and B, and then we reconvene for possible action on C. So if anyone's gonna speak, they would actually speak on twenty or twenty-one.
So whatever. Okay.
Does that make any sense?
You wanna redo your card? You wanna speak on item nineteen, and nineteen is executive session, so you wanted to. You have nineteen, so you just wanna rewrite it real quick.
You wanna speak for.
I'll do it for you. So you wanna speak on item twenty or twenty-one?
Well, I wanted to, I just had a comment on this item.
Well, this is executive session. You're gonna comment on an executive session?
I didn't know that's how it's set up.
Yeah, well, it's clearly item nineteen is executive session. So you wanna make comment on twenty or twenty-one, or both?
Twenty-one.
Okay. All these will wait. So we move on to item nineteen, executive session authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-four A-one, to deliberate with personnel matters. The city council may adjourn into executive session, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of discipline of dismissal of public officer of employee of Odessa Development, Odessa, downtown Odessa. Council, do I need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Vasquez, second by council member Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay?
And then Mayor, you're also gonna go ahead and do the same thing on B as well.
Okay.
'Cause I would suspect it'd be easier just to stay in and then come back out for all of it.
I'm taking a vote on nineteen?
On nineteen B.
Yeah, but I'm doing on eight right now. I haven't finished my vote yet.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All those against indicating by saying, all those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. Item nineteen B, executive session authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, deliberations about real property. The city council may adjourn into executive session, too. A governmental body may conduct closed meeting to deliberate on purchase, exchange, leave, or value of real property of deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on positions of government body and negotiators of third person, Odessa College. Council, I have a motion on nineteen B to go into executive session. I have a motion by council member Cornell to have a second.
Second.
Second by council member Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. We are going to executive session. We'll be back.
Yeah, I'm gonna eat it. Hey, as long as it comes with place note on your lips.
I thought, of course.
That's like saying, well, I can't.
No.
Am I being wrong, Ken?
I have to be.
I'm on the low. I only had come up.
You need to get the real stuff.
We got it. We're good. You close the door.
Well, waiting for that.
Oh, yeah.
This is where we need elevator music.
Hey, me.
Well, we got, we're very handy. We can, we can.
We can start. We have enough to get it going.
Seeing that there is no action taken in executive session, need a motion to reconvene into general session.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilmember Mata second, by Councilmember Vasquez all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you name it. We're gonna move on to item twenty. I will entertain a motion to remove from the table to consider donating real property where the Desert College Downtown Park has been built for Desert College Pursuit and Local Government Code. Section two seven two point zero zero one. Have a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Thompson, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you ask me. Item twenty, we will hear from John Betmeyer about donating real property to Desert College Downtown Park.
It's, we tabled this a couple weeks ago so that we could check in. We tabled this a couple weeks ago so that we could check in to some legalities around donating this real property. What got us looking at this is it had been donated originally in kind of an incomplete manner, but by the wrong process, so we were coming back to donate it by ordinance like it should be. While we were looking into this, there were some questions raised about the legality of donating municipality donating property to another government entity and in looking at property to another entity. However, and any of y'all that were here for the work session already heard me say this once. What state law does is it tells you what you can do as a municipality, not what you can't do. And it says you can use your resources, which are taken